Much worse out there than.
But at least Saturday is kind of like.
Call the work session to order on December fourth. Andrew. So, good afternoon. Um, we have our team from Bart and the Juice here tonight. They're gonna go over some of the uh, the project specific things for the Cornelia Street Rehabilitation Project. Just a quick little overview here. Uh, this project's been going for a couple of years now. It started out with a survey and traffic study that was done by La Bella. After that, we actually talked to DOT where DOT is giving us grant funding to do this project. Essentially, what we're gonna be doing is almost a complete street project here. We're widening the road, adding sidewalks, bike lanes. I'm sure many of you know, uh, days like today when people who typically walk or bike that street to go get their groceries will walk down the middle of the road with a handful of groceries. Um, right in the drivelines. So that's the type of sufferer who uh, stop them happening with this project. So uh, after the traffic study and after we got funding from DOT to move forward with the project, we hired Barney and Judas to do the design. Um, we have submitted the draft design report to DOT. They've come back with a few comments. Um, we're yeah, in the process of making those comments now to where we should be moving forward with uh preliminary final design. And then uh, construction hopefully in twenty two uh, twenty twenty seven. So I'll uh hand it over to Dan and his team and they can go through and uh, kind of give you the the brief, quick little uh, public information session here. Uh, and then after that, uh, one of the things you guys are gonna be voting on tonight is to declare yourself lead agency for secret termination for the project. Um, and if you have any questions about that, we can go over that after the big presentation. Thank you.
Well, all right. Good afternoon. Um, I'm Dan Rourke. I'm with Chris Cannon. Project engineer on the project and Connor Brown is a stat here. So, so we've spent a few time on the project and we're just here to give it up. So if you want to take questions. So, uh, Andrew already touched on the funding for the project. Project team related to some city or if you're as ever here. It's a funding month in your Asian part of the Asians and uh, federal government, the federal haven't made the streets. This is essentially your calculating season when approvals open projects.
So, uh, Andrew mentioned that, you know, funding is coming through DOT. He's already secured. What the funding that you have right now is for design only. Uh, about one point five million dollars. Uh, there's several things that are included in that. Including uh, preliminary design, the draft designer report, which is a written report environmental evaluation of the project that that's at DOT right now. We've also done extensive utility review of the project corridor. We've inspected all of the sanitary sewer lines outside there. And you might have seen the city has already proactively taken the approach of protecting the investment in this project by lining the sewer system. So there's some structure connectivity out there lately. And the project funding also, it gets us up to the point of going out to bid to construction. And the next steps after that are working with DOT to just align the funding paid for the actual construction phase. So this project, here's your, the project limits are shown here in red. Uh, basically the town city line right up Churchill Street. Um, up Cornelia to Prospect Avenue. Um, and then we have the stuff by Walgreens there about halfway to Prospect on that approach. So, project objectives, these are like the main bullet points that we're trying to achieve with this project. Uh, number one being improving traffic operations out here. Overall safety for everybody that uses this corridor. So stuff vehicles, pedestrians and bicyclists. One of the key items is to improve the Cornelia Street and Broad Street intersections. We're well aware of the congestion that happens there. Uh, access management. So, you know, there's some really wide driveway openings. Um, kind of creates a little bit of chaos when we're coming in and out of all the commercial businesses. We're just kind of cleaning that up and making it a more more standard look. So, everybody is entering and exiting the highway in same way. Drainage, utility improvements. Um, again, protecting that investment in, you know, the new sidewalk, the new pavement, making sure everything that's underground, it is sound. Um, and just generally enhance the appearance of the four door street scape improvements. This is a gateway for the city. Just, you know, improving that first impression if you're coming off of the highway into the city.
All right. Um, so I think everyone here is probably pretty familiar with the existing conditions of the corridor. I'm sure you've driven it or walked it or biked it a lot. So, um, if you have, you know, there's no designated sidewalk in a lot of those areas there, um, or a lot of the areas throughout the the project limits that Dan mentioned. Um, no ADA compliant sidewalk. So that means keeping the cross slope generally level. So everybody, you know, people in wheelchairs and everything can access it. Um, really smooth uh, transitions everywhere. Um, no bumps or anything like that. So making it accessible to all users uh, is really the goal of this project. And a complex intersection there, that's Broad Street and uh, Cornelia Street uh, bottom right there. Um, again, that making that more pedestrian friendly, adding crosswalks throughout, adding pedestrian signals. Um, really pleasing that one up. More existing conditions. So curbing throughout has been beat up by snowplows uh, over the years. Um, bottom left there, you know, poor delineation of a driveway. You can barely tell the difference between where the driveway ends and the roadway begins there. It's just asphalt with paved over curb in a lot of areas. Uh, top right there, non ADA compliant curb ramp again. So, um, standards have changed a lot since this has probably been worked on last. So, um, really bringing that up to the latest standards, which are, you know, meant to protect uh, all those um, uh, pedestrians and not motorized users. And then overhead utilities, there's a lot of those uh, throughout the corridor. Um, most of them are some kind of communications, Horizon, Verizon or um, some of the others. So, um, one of the goals of this project is to potentially underground those utilities through there. Um, and clean up the look of the corridor as Dan mentioned. So. Uh, existing conditions. So we assess the level of service, um, which is a measures or it's a way to categorize the delay at each intersection there. So we assign a grade scale A through F uh, for the average time that a driver would wait at an intersection. Uh, so if it's an A, it's really good. Uh, you on average, if you pull up to an intersection, you would wait, wait less than 10 seconds. Uh, and it goes to a B is from 10 to 20 seconds. Uh, F is more than eighty seconds. Eighty seconds, which would feel like an eternity if you're sitting there for almost a minute and a half at a red light on average. So, that's um, that's also during your peak hour too. So that's, you know, during right now, usually for thirty to five. Uh, generally part of the peak hour there. Um, so of the three intersections where we are going to replace the traffic plates and aiming to improve all the service, we got Logan Ave and Cornelia, uh, Broad Street and Prospect Ave. Uh, so the Cohen Ave um, intersection there that has pretty good delay, uh, there only nine seconds on average. But then both Broad Street and Prospect were a level of service C with twenty five seconds on average roughly um, delay at each of those intersections. There's also crash history out there. This is part of our initial uh, preliminary design. Uh, we look at the safety of the corridor, uh, look at uh, what crashes have occurred usually over three year time span timeframe. We uh, brought this out a little further to five year timeframe. So, um, you can see a summary here of the crashes that have occurred. Um, the, they're broken down. We have personal injury crashes. We have property damage crashes and not reportable. So personal injury, that's pretty self explanatory. Someone got injured in that crash. Property damage is usually um, just vehicle damage, or it could also be someone hit a light pole or something, utility pole, uh, something like that. So you can see there are mostly property damage crashes throughout uh, that five year stretch there. Um, not too many injuries. And on the right table there, a lot of rear ending uh, crashes are occurring at these intersections uh, and some right angle, which would be uh, some kind of turning uh, crash there. So either somebody turning and hitting another vehicle. Um, for that. So another goal again of this project is improve safety for all users. So that would be through new uh, traffic signals. Making them a lot more conspicuous to the drivers that are going to be could be waiting at a traffic light. Uh, so the proposed design, so this is a injury degree cross section of the roadway. So on top, we have the existing roadway section there, um, which consists of four rule lanes, a two-way left turn lane in the middle. Uh, then generally you just hit the curb there and then outside of that curb, you have some places you have sidewalks, some places you have driveways. Some places you have grass, you have asphalt that may look like a sidewalk. Um, so what our project is proposing to do is to keep that same vehicle travel lane configuration there. Uh, where we have the four travel lanes doing each direction, that two-way left turn lane, keeping them all the same width too. Uh, but then we're gonna extend that curb out five feet at a bike lane in there. Um, both sides, and then we'll include a four foot utility strip. Uh, where you know, you'll have lighting. Um, you'll have snow storage. Uh, you know, that files up quite a bit. And then outside of that, you'll have a five foot sidewalk on both sides as well. So this is your, or you can see where um, we also need additional right of way on either side. So right now, uh, the average highway boundary is about fifty or sixty-three to eighty-nine feet, I believe that is. So we'll need to go out from that. Um, roughly eighty-eight feet to ninety-four feet uh, for right of way. So a lot of really narrow strip takings along that corridor there. Um, and that's really just so the city can continue to maintain uh, what their investment is right now. If something needs to be replaced under that sidewalk or if they need to replace the sidewalk, they can do so without um, without any delay. So. And this again just shows the corridor um, in a prettier picture of what uh, that would look like with the bike lanes on either side. Um, your travel lanes, that utility strip that uh, snow storage area there where all the lights are, and then the sidewalk outside of that. Um, so again, overall project limits and the whole corridor here um, overlaid with the new pavement and asphalt. Uh, and generally what our conceptual design is gonna look like. So again, improvements include ADA compliant sidewalks, five foot wide bike lanes, undergrounding those utilities, improved drainage throughout. So that we're removing that curb line. So we're gonna have to put in drainage structures, which uh, we also CCTV, we ran a little robot through each uh, each drainage pipe there, found a lot of um, faults that nobody knew were there before and uh, found a lot of pipes that had issues. Some pipes had other pipes going through them. So um, that new drainage structure or that new drainage infrastructure there, uh, we'll move all that old stuff there and uh, replace that with new stuff. And um, you know, we'll look at what the drainage looks like out there now and hopefully eliminate any puddles or any other areas. Um, where that's coming uh, through as well. So breaking this down to um, smaller sections here uh, from the city limits, we extend a little bit outside that to prepare some of the water uh, infrastructure that's underneath. Um, new valve system there just outside the city limits. And then moving on, so you can see how we have some uh, reconsolidated driveways. Um, kind of changing where some of the entrances and exits are through some of the businesses throughout. Um, that new traffic light, new crosswalks at Logan Ave. There, um, new striping, new asphalt, everything. Um, you're placed there. Again, through here, uh, the stretch, um, same thing, all the driveways, reconsolidating and configuring them. Um, and then just showing that uh, proposed cross section on top again, how it'll look um, from the aerial view. And then, you know, if you're looking down the street as well. Uh, so here Broad Street intersection uh, with Cornelia. So new traffic light and pedestrian signals at this intersection. Um, we were able to work in a little bit of uh, geom- geometric improvements here to try to align people from Broad Street as they're coming through, try to align them a little bit um, better with going through, going to the west uh, towards eighty-seven there. Um, just try to make that turn a little better and um, adding in some of those uh, dashed lines that you see there in the middle. Um, there as well. Um, and I'm just really trying to make it so this intersection will just flow a little better and you don't have any uh, accidents where you have side swipes or any confusion there. Um, it also be new improved the vehicle detection. So that'll be all part of the traffic operations that are approved here um, for the threat as well. And then the last leg of the project here, uh, just from that uh, end there by Kenny Drugs to Prospect Ave where we will um, redo, replace that traffic light there as well. So, and again, those five foot bike, wide bike lanes will extend all the way from Prospect Ave there out to the uh, out to the city limits. Uh, so overall, Andrew touched on the project schedule a little bit. So we are right in the middle there, the public information meeting, December twenty twenty-five. That's today. So up to date, we've uh, done a lot of coordination with DOT, FHWA. Um, um, the environmental reviews to date uh, through the design report. Um, we did a historic assessment of the corridor for the section one oh six required by FHWA. And we've done uh, environmental screenings for threatened native species. Uh, that's also required by FHWA DOT. Um, so then hopefully beginning design approval beginning in uh, the spring here in twenty twenty-six, which then means that we can really get to the nuts and bolts of designing the roadway corridor here. Really getting things ready uh, for construction to start hopefully in April of twenty twenty-seven. Also have here down in the bottom, our overall construction total, we're estimating right now at just under fifteen billion. Um, and best are roadways, cruise escape improvement, drainage, utility, lighting, traffic signals, traffic control. And uh, the other miscellaneous um, costs that are included with uh, never will worry a outside contractor to do this work. Any questions?
Oh, yeah.
Andrew.
I have.
Take them all right now.
I have several. Um, I thought the city line was up to Starbucks.
So it is on that side of the roads. We actually follow um, this, the city operation line. Uh, comes along the right of way on that southerly portion of the road. And then at McDonald's, it cuts across the road over to Churchill Street. And goes.
So it's just much easier to just stop at Churchill.
Yeah, because of everything, the actual roadway itself from Churchill West is, is not in the city limits. That's actually.
Okay.
In the town of Classford, but it's operated by DOT.
Okay. Um, what about um, Cornelia and Prospect? We're not doing anything with that traffic?
Cornelia and Prospect is Broad and Prospect is not it. Right. Yeah, Mr. Loustrad.
So I looked at it backwards. Cool. Okay. But why are we doing proms?
Because the, the original project was only supposed to be the ru- Route Three Corridor. Um, if we had gone an alternate route, then we would have had to look at that intersection as part of the, all of the traffic studies and everything for the potentials, the, the, the roundabout.
But didn't we kind of, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Didn't we all agree that that's kind of like the traffic gets backed up quite a bit and that traffic light is.
That's, that's what the concern was if we had gone the other.
Other thing.
Yes. Yeah. So had, had we gone that, then we were gonna reach out to DOT to see if we could include that intersection as part of the project. Does it the effect that the, that option may have had on that intersection, I think.
And then coming out of Walgreens.
Is it a possibility to look at that install now though? Or is it too late?
I, I mean, we could, we could reach out to DOT. We're trying to.
Yeah.
Thought we had.
That's one of the problems with that structure.
Am I wrong?
Road.
Right. At, at this point, I would feel that DOT is gonna want it. That is a separate.
We need to get. She needs, she needs that stuff. Um, so she knows what we've come up to so far.
Yeah.
But the, um, I mean, just something. So she's, she knows where we've been all along. But um, coming out of Walgreens, is, is it going to be left and right? It's not gonna be straight?
Right. So what?
So I, I didn't see that.
Yeah. What we're gonna do is there are gonna be certain traffic movements that are not gonna be allowed that are currently allowed, I guess, or currently being done. So if you're leaving Walgreens, you're no longer gonna be able to go straight across and you're no longer to, gonna be able to go straight across and take a right onto Cornelia Street. You're only gonna be able to make a right-hand turn onto Broad Street or a left-hand turn onto Cornelia Street.
All right.
And vice versa, as you're coming out of Stewart's, you're no longer gonna be able to go straight across or go across the Broad Street. It's gonna be a left hand on the Cornelia or a right hand on the Cornelia. Because a majority of the accidents that happen at that intersection are people pulling up and this one's going straight across, but the one coming out of Walgreens thinks they've got the right of way and then you end up with a collision there.
Right.
So we're eliminating those turn movements to to eliminate.
I know that was like with this design, that was one of our major um, major concerns with like going straight. Um, and it's funny because when you look at those pictures, you don't really realize it because you live here. You drive it, you don't. When you look at those pictures, that's in some pretty bad shape.
It is.
Lightways and everything.
If you, and a lot of like, uh, Chris had mentioned, a lot of those are very steep slope. So just trying to walk on those without having any type of mobility issue can be tricky, especially when you get in front of a car wash. That's, that's a pretty steep.
Yeah.
Um, so this will widen, you know, widen that out, change the grade of those, you know, two percent frost slope sidewalk. Make it much more funnier for pedestrian. Accessibility.
Do you have more questions?
No.
Okay. I have some questions. Okay. Um, you might have uh, explained this in the graphic, but is there a estimate as to how much wider in total?
So, so yeah, so the, the actual right of ways vary. So when we had initially done our traffic study and survey, we actually ended up having to pay La Bella a little bit more money for the survey because typically you have right of way mapping for a road like this. DOT had no right of way mapping. So what they had to do was they actually had to analyze every single parcel and every single parcel had a different depth that went into the roadway. So essentially when we do highway takings, everybody's highway taking is gonna be a little bit different because their parcel extends into the roadway a little bit more than others.
Okay.
So they're, they're gonna vary as you go down through the corridor.
Is there an average? Yeah.
Yeah.
So seven and a half expanded?
Just pretty good.
On each side or total?
Yeah.
So, yeah. So like fourteen feet of increased width. Okay. And then um, just so I understand the starting point. Um, is it accurate to say that the problems that we're trying to solve for are aesthetic and also safety?
So, so when we started this project, safety was our number one priority. So the two issues that we were looking to fix were the intersection.
Yeah.
Uh, of Cornelia and Broad, basically the Walgreens, Stewart's, Plaza entrance.
Yeah.
Um, there's a huge accent rate. I think we were what? Ten percent higher than the highest average nation there, ten times higher than the nation's average for intersection comparable.
That's.
And then the other thing is, is as I spoke before, when I say you can literally drive up that street and see people carrying their groceries down the middle of the road.
Or wheelchairs. That was our big, was the ADA.
Yeah, there with there being no sidewalks and all of the grocery stores are on the west end of town. Anybody who lives on the east end of town will walk up there and carry their groceries down. Um, we, I've actually witnessed somebody on a bicycle go across the crosswalk from Burger King over to, it was a gas station at the time, but now it's the, the beer store. Um, there's no drop hurt there. So he pushed the button, crossed the road, rode his bike across and hit the curb and went flying off of his bike.
Right on.
So it's things like that that we're trying to fix um, with this project. Uh, so pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, aesthetics, if you're gonna do a project like this, you're gonna make it look better. And then um, as Chris had mentioned, we had some utility uh, not utility issues, but things that we thought we could improve on. So as a portion of the project, we had to have all the lines camered anyways. Um, that let us know that our sewer lines in particular weren't in great shape, but they were in good enough shape to slip line, which is why this past summer, we uh, Mike and Chris crew had a team come in and slip line those sewer lines. So that's gonna give us a better life expectancy of those pipes um, through the process. So that's one last thing that we're gonna have to do as a portion of this project because it's already done. And then there'll be all new storm sewer put in uh, as a portion of this project.
Okay, cool. Um, thank you. Is there a estimate around how much the collision rate would be expected to decrease based on the changes?
There, so the, the main thing to point out, the crash analysis that was up on the street before.
She wasn't here. Oh, oh, this one. Oh, yeah, we had a little presentation. So it was kind of cool too.
You're right.
That's mine.
And the aim. Those are typically caused by uh, congestion areas when they're popping starting a lot at Red Lake.
Mm-hmm.
Multi-line highways where you're in and out of multiple properties and worst property. So improving the operation of the signals. Uh, increasing the level of service, getting close to that level of service pay. Getting people through the intersections on whether they're stopping all the time. And cleaning up the driveway. So it's not very strong. Of sixty-foot wide driveway. This person's gonna take a left here. Someone's gonna take a left in here, creating all these weird traffic movements. We're not really expecting someone to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Those will all, they take away the chances of those types of accidents.
Okay. And with the redrawing of the I don't know what the verbiage is for this kind of thing, but the redrawing of the lines in the intersection area.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there any information you can provide around? Um, well, well, just what you'd expect to change in terms of collision rates?
The way Broad Street there is aligned right now. Cornelia Street there. So if you go from the the, if you drive just straight, you would end up hitting another vehicle head there. So this will hopefully draw, be drawing those lines there through the intersection will keep the people that are in right lane on Broad Street there and those on the right lane on Cornelia Street. And then the same thing for the people on left lane on Broad Street. End up putting that yellow line there, hopefully end up right for that yellow line. So it would keep vehicles from potentially bliding in the middle.
So, so typically what happens is right now, this line actually appears to be parked there. And because this is just a straight, cars naturally go straight. Like you said, they end up almost in a head-on collision here. And by taking this and angling it, it makes them reject out and then come back in. And then push that line back a little bit.
There's gonna be lines there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Just so I understand, it's just a matter of redrawing the lines, though you're not changing the pattern really of the traffic and how it's proceeding.
Pattern of traffic, but we are changing the geometry of the roadway a little bit. So on Broad Street there, you can see there's a little bit of a curve for that, a little bit of a scoop there. Right now it's a straight line. So we're trying to bring people down and then pump a little bit to just. Now it's a straight line, so we're trying to bring people down and then up a little bit to just make it more of a.
Yeah, so when the when the car sits at the stoplight. Instead of being straight and looking at. A car in front of them coming at them, they're gonna be angled a little bit this way away from that car. So naturally, they're gonna come to the intersection and then they're gonna turn to go. Through the intersection. Heading west on Cornelia Street.
Okay.
It just changes their their geometry a little bit. So they'll naturally come up and then over.
You you see the occasional person, I I myself do, you pull way up. Sounds like almost like a a s- a square, almost like a corner.
And the the problem you have there is if the person on the outside lane doesn't go far. It almost pinches you and pushes you into that oncoming traffic lane. So by putting the lines in there, it's, you know, it's forcing people to to follow the lines.
Okay, just out of my own curiosity, are there like? Best practices in design that you're following to come to this conclusion or?
Yeah, there's there's a the national standard uh, design manual for highways. When these guys do that design, that's what they're following.
Okay. Okay, and what we have now is that substandard to what you see in those best practice models.
Just what it happens a lot, it just evolved over.
Yeah, it's been there a long time.
They update those manuals every so often, so you could have an intersection that. You know, fifty years ago met those standards that longer than this.
Right, things getting bolted on over.
Yeah, specifically Walgreens, you know, Walgreens is is newer to that intersection, probably what fifteen years ago.
Right, okay. Awesome, okay, I have a couple more questions, um. The next thing is, it seems like necessarily a lot of concrete asphalt is being added, um. And I saw there is like a little strip of grass. But is there any way to? Kind of make it maximally aesthetically pleasing?
So the reason.
So much added concrete?
Yeah, so the reason we went with concrete in this area, particularly in what we call the utility strip. So through here, a lot of salt gets put down because it's our main drag, so what happens is is when you have grass. The grass doesn't grow, because the salt just kills the grass. Um, so we chose to go with concrete here, because you're just gonna have dirt there all the time. So the the concrete would be better for water runoff, pushing it into the road, going into the drainage system. So that's really why we we chose that route, cause it's just, it's just gonna be dead and it's.
Is there any like? Stone elements or something that could be incorporated to just?
So we could, we could do, um, obviously, we'll still have trees in there, so you'll have the trees with the tree grates. Uh, like we have on Margaret Street, you could do the like a stamped diet concrete if you wanted, so it wasn't all the same color, kind of break it up a little bit. Similar to what we did on Margaret Street. Those are all kind of different options that we can get into later on, once we get into the detailed, the advanced design plans.
Okay, and then you mentioned there was a study about species impact.
Yep, so that's all required through New York State.
Okay, and was there anything of note in that? Alright, awesome, that's all my questions, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so. Cornelia. And Broad turning left into Walgreens, that's still going to be in the new revised plan.
So if you're coming westbound on a Cornelia.
Correct, going going west from Cornelia, going west from. Turning into Walgreens, that's still going to be. So the. Oh, what is the, what is the turns that are being eliminated?
So. Yeah, so if you're coming out of Walgreens, you're no longer gonna be able to go up and over to Cornelia. Or straight across the Blastford Plaza.
Okay. And same coming the other way.
If you're coming from Blastford Plaza, no more going straight across or coming to Broad Street, so if you wanna come in. There's there's very few people who make this movement and wanna go straight across from Blastford Plaza Walgreens. But if they do, they're gonna have to turn down Cornelia Street, come down the Broad and come around. Or they could turn and go through Burger King and use use that route if they wanted to.
Number two, the big valve is being replaced.
Yeah, so if, um, if you go all the way to the west end of the project. Yeah, right there, so essentially what we have is right here about Churchill Street. We have a taller manifold, so on the north and south side. Of Route Three, we have two twenty-four inch water mains that come from our water filtration plant. And they come down, and then the two of them are connected together. And at that connection, you have four water needs. That come off of that, run down Route Three, and then they split at Wa- at Broad in Cornelia Street. And go down, those are basically our feeder pipes that feed the city water, so. The valving at that intersection is not great, um. We had a water line break there a few years ago, Mike and I got onto one of those valves. Uh, you have to turn those valves five hundred and twelve times to get that to shut off. There it's a, it's a bypass valve, so it's it's a huge valve, that's why there's so many turns on it. We got to eighty turns and we could not shut it off anymore. So what we wanna do is we want to, uh. Eliminate that manifold, put a new manifold in, so that we have something that if we have an issue. We have a positive way of controlling the waterfall, so that's essentially what we're gonna do at intersection for that manifold.
Okay, how old are those lines?
My phone's back there, uh, there. You got one that's from the seventies and some of them are nineteen twenties, I believe, on top of my head.
And they're still, they'll be vi- under viable another twenty, thirty years?
Yeah, I mean, the the condition of the pipe, um, was is fairly good, we actually had a, uh. A break on one of them, you decided it looked pretty decent, um. So it was the the hard, the hard part of the ghost bikes are because they're older bikes, they're not actually, they're more of an egg shaped. So everything new is more around, so when you're trying to get them to fit.
The real big thing is having positive. On that manifold, so right now, we're gonna have situation, probably gonna take that manifold up and put on the valves in place. The other thing is, is the twenty inch pipe pulls a lot of water, so, uh, it's vastly gonna shut down better. Downstream, they shut off. So if you shut it off, the tank basically is your next option. It's a, that is a good option.
Last one, um, so downstream. That the this, the, um, water runoff, does it eventually? Hit a sewer line and go through the waste plant, or does it go?
I would.
Where it's supposed to go.
I have to go back and look at mapping, I believe that system is separate.
Okay.
But I can verify that and then shoot you an email, you know that for sure.
Okay.
Well, right, but then where.
Yeah, where it goes down, yeah.
Yeah, there's there's the potential that that could tie into a combined sewer system downstream for.
That one's gonna go the other way though.
I think it does.
I think that one.
See, right. So I'll take, I'll take a look, I know, sure.
So I go.
Any other questions? Alright, thanks guys.
Safe travels. Anybody have questions?
I have a question on one of the bills, can I ask that now, I always ask that, can I ask? It's, um, Mike. Okay, here. Mike. Mr. Bissette, excuse me, um. The Perry Bridge Joint Repairs. It, so this is a, um.
First order, yeah, so what that is, I think first order to balance out the capital project that we had for, so we put in an estimate of a few hundred thousand dollars. After it's a cost plus, uh, you know, we're not. And at two hundred and ten, I think three nineteen is what that is for. So we had enough money, the overall road surfacing program being easily covered.
Okay.
So that's all that's for.
No, so that that was the joint sum.
That's expansion, yeah, again, we 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 get an estimate from the the contractors. Develop an estimate, sometimes Ohio's law, it just, it takes what it takes, again, we shut every day or not, exactly sure what. Uh, short of doing a lump sum bid contract, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I was gonna ask him, give us the lowdown on South Acres, just Andrew, just cause I don't know.
I like that idea.
Jackie, have you been to see Boomer? Oh, it's almost.
Emma, you got a big thing this weekend, wanna talk about it?
There's been a couple of concerns that people might not be able to hear unless you're at the mic.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, the Saturday holiday parade, um, so. We have about forty-six entries, um, this year. We actually couldn't fit anymore on Broad Street, so we have to cut it off, there was actually. Um, more interest than even that, so we we could have had up to probably like sixty floats, really. Um, so maybe we'll figure out a different pathway next year, but, um, but yeah, and then we have. A couple of pre-parade performances on the trailer stage, which will be parked across from. The Strand, uh, so we'll have encore performing and then center stage dance group, um. And then the Strand will also be doing some programming inside and then out on their lawn, starting at three P M. And the parade starts at five thirty.
So I guess the Strand is having a big concert that night, so I'm just kinda. Making sure people are aware about the parking situation, so get there early to get your parking.
Yes, yes.
Seriously. It's a Dave, it's a Dave Matthews tribute band, so they're gonna fill that theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us a rundown on South Acres?
What's that?
Can you give us a rundown on South Acres?
Yes, so, um, we've got a, actually, for South Acres, we have a couple of things on the agenda, both of them are very similar, uh, basically. Declaring, uh, type two secret determination. For both the proposed bocce ball, uh, grant if you have, and the uh, playground grant, so. Both of these grants are kinda in the same phase, we're just doing the last round of paperwork for these to get them submitted, uh, the playground. Today, we actually got back the estimate for the playground that we wanna put there. Um, so that'll get submitted in the paperwork, hopefully this is the last thing, and they tell us, hey, go ahead and order the, uh. Order the equipment and then we'll get it installed in the spring, uh, bocce ball, same thing, um. We're at the same round of paperwork, submitting cost estimates and everything for that, so hopefully that'll start in the spring. Uh, what the secret review is, um, we don't have to do planning board review or site plan review for these projects. Because there are parks, so we're not subject to our own regulations for these, um, but the question came up from, uh, the the grant. Um, reviewer. As to whether we had to do a secret determination for these projects, um. He said he wasn't a hundred percent sure, so I said, tell you what, we got a meeting coming up, I'm gonna put him on there. We'll do the secret determination, cause they're gonna be a type two, which means they have no adverse effect on the environment, and then, um. Nothing happens after that, that's that's what I said to him. So really, all you guys are doing is going to be, um, going with my recommendation to determine these as a type two action for secret review. And that's it, then I can send them to them, and then that's how we're setting the processes completed. So hopefully by summertime, we've got a new playground and a new bocce ball court out there.
Awesome.
These are both Dazm brands with Billy Jones, bro. Yep, so we can find and tell Billy.
The, uh. Yeah, I'll give you a kind of a quick update on Boomer, uh, playground, I don't know if you guys have been up there lately, it's, uh, just about ninety percent. They had a hundred tons of mulch that they dropped off last week, they were able to spread that. They had eighty tons that were dropped off yesterday and it completely froze and they can't move it with their equipment. So essentially, what's gonna happen is until we get like our, we we tend to get a mid-winter thaw. Lately, so if we do get that mid-winter thaw, they're gonna come back and finish everything, if not, first thing in the spring, they'll be back to get that included. Um, what they've done so far looks great, um. Yeah, they they probably will, uh. I went up to the top of it, there's four different slides on it, um, I wasn't about to try to go down it, but. Yeah, I think the kids have fun, it's a nice little place.
The sticker says test and pay.
Yeah, yeah. I'll wait certify it. Equipment purchase. I can certainly talk about that too, so, uh, I've done some great work, so essentially what that is. Um, we went out to bid on state contract for basketball, soccer balls, baseballs. Um, all kinds of different equipment that we can put in our parks, so when we have those attendants that are gonna be at the park. Kid shows up, wants to play basketball, but doesn't have a basketball, we now have that stuff at our parks that we can loan them, so they can go out and play basketball. And then give them back to us, so that purchase order is to buy that type of equipment, um, we did buy like sidewalk chalk. Uh, crans, markers, stuff like that, so we can do activities with the kids in the parks, um, so we're we're going all in with. With this, so we can do.
Be able to take donations if somebody wanted to donate equipment or anything?
They wanted to donate some time, they could too, they wanted to do an art class at one of the parks like summer.
Okay. Somebody wanted to.
They wanted to, they more than happy, please reach out to me, we will.
We we do have, um, we're a a college student who got certified in yoga and hasn't been able to. Use that certification, so she actually was talking with Bianca about coming in and doing some yoga classes, doing like yoga at the beach, yoga at the parks. Um, so that's something that we might be doing as well. And actually, I think, uh, some of the stuff on that, we're we're yoga mats just for that that purpose.
So how does the parcelling out of the equipment work?
So that would be what we're looking to do is put, uh, temporary labors at our major parks, and then as the kids come. Those temporary labors would be in charge of handling that equipment and making sure that equipment comes back.
This is great, I mean, this is, South Acres is the last park, so I mean, once that's done.
So that'll be done, but then we also have. So we have a grant application for Melissa Penfield, um, that one is gonna be a big one, so that's a million, it's a million and a million, it's a fifty fifty. But that is for an all-inclusive playground, which means it's one hundred percent handicap accessible, they can drive wheelchairs all the way around the playground apparatus.
There's an autistic set.
Yeah, there's, there's, that's, that's a, that's a big deal if we get that grant.
So i- is that it? The million that we have to contribute.
Yes.
Can we get supplemental?
We are working.
That's what we're.
We're looking, we we can't, listen, that's one thing the city has.
Cause that's a lot.
It's a lot, and we do, we can't work, I mean, but we can't afford to go out and get supplemental. Well, we can also get people that, uh, some of the weeks, like the Rotary, my sponsor section.
I see.
We get sponsors for certain sections of this, so it's not, and then. The upkeep, I mean, that's one thing we've been really, the city's been really bad with upkeep, so some of these groups could maybe, you know. Follow through with the upkeep on this too, so that's what we're looking at too, cause, uh, we can't afford to keep.
Neglecting.
Making these same mistakes over and over again.
And then we also have a grant application for a new playground at the beach as well. Um, cause I think that's one of the things that we're seeing on the beaches, is a playground out there.
Yeah.
We're looking, changing the beach this summer to something. User friendly.
I actually have a playground on my board.
Yeah, well, you have the nicest beach in America, though. Nobody else has.
You don't have.
That's the biggest first water beach in America in the world.
Next door to your house.
I'll take that over slide any day.
Right, you gotta. You've got a nice vacant lot right next door to your house, right? You've got a nice vacant lot right next door to your house, right?
Right. That'd be perfect. The only reason I I don't, I think the soil is not.
Yeah, because I I know the other the other site on the other side of that, I think is the Brownfield.
Yeah.
So it's.
That'd be great.
Think it'd be awesome.
That would be awesome.
Dog park and kev, I mean, it just.
The possibilities are unlimited.
We're looking at actually signage up so people know what time our beach closes and bathrooms.
And in French.
We have to be better. We have to get better up there.
You need a bilingual.
Any other questions?
Yeah, no, I think. Not not being a Debbie Downer here, but.
If you're gonna do it, just don't do it.
Yes, I am. Is there anything with uh the attendants? Being able to. Not become a babysitter.
That is a huge issue.
So that, yeah. So essentially what we're we're looking. Not to advertise that we have somebody there full time, but to say, hey. There's gonna be this activity taking place at this time. So that when somebody shows up and you know, there's. Even putting like maybe a list of rules to say children can't be left unattended.
Please uh accompany your child.
Yes, we're. We're looking to do like a family friendly thing so that parents can spend time with their children. Um not just, hey, I'm gonna drop my kid off for two hours and and drive away. Right, um that is a that is a very major concern. Uh it happens. You do open gyms at schools, parents just drop their kids off and leave. Anybody who is. Going to be a temporary labor will be CPR and first aid certified. Just so. If something does happen. We can at least have a a first responder before.
Yeah.
Paramedic, C M S, or anybody get there. So that's kind of.
We're gonna be having um first days uh C P R training here. For stat. We're working out the details right now. As soon as we go, we'll make sure. Everybody gets invited. And we we're getting uh there's two ways. We have the red boxes we're putting up. So. We we just did a. Safety study. And we're looking at keeping our employees, so. We're gonna take some, we're going to. We have to invest. And make sure our employees are safe as well.
The uh the other one that I have on the agenda real quick is the um. Professional service agreement with Clinton County for the Art Pro G I S, so. The county gives us access to their G I S. Program. So basically, we need place for a seat to be able to use it throughout the year. Um they forgot to have us. Do an agreement with them for this year, so it's it's kinda late. So we're just kind of buttoning that up for this year. There will be a new one for next year. Um that one is gonna be a little bit more, just because now we have. Uh Emily, our planner. Has the capability to actually create in G I S, so we're gonna up the program, so she has more capability. Um so we can create databases, uh particularly for like our planning. Um one thing we'd like to do is redo. All of our filing system. It's very hard to find things for any type of project here in the city. Um so that's one of the big things that I wanna wanna start working on is redoing our filing system for any type of projects. Grant applications, anything um all address based, so you can go to an address, you can click on it. You can see any type of project that's ever been worked on for that piece of property. So that's one of the things we're gonna work with with that role. So that's everything that I have on the agendas. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions for any of the other?
Um I have a quick Department of Public Works question. Hi. I just got. A question from a resident about paving schedule. Um I don't know if you have this information, but for Ward Three. Do you know when? The section between Park Avenue and Dennis Avenue is.
I believe that we have it off this year.
For this year?
Yep.
Okay.
That was easy.
Awesome, thank you.
So Dennis, we have Dennis scheduled.
Okay, so for twenty twenty six. Alright, cool, thank you.
Any other questions for?
What?
Very well, you'll call us. Take a quick break and start the meeting.
So we get. We get. Money back.
Seven worth, two thousand twenty-five, I'll call the common council meetings to order, please rise.
The United States of America.
It's current, you do the rule.
Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Council Bond.
Here.
Council Evans.
Here.
Council Strack.
Here.
Council Talon.
Here.
Council Manette.
Here.
Council Colleen.
Counselor Colleen wanted me to make sh- she had um. Family issue today. She wanted to be here and she is here.
No, she's not.
She's not?
No.
Okay. But um she apologized for not being here, but she had family issue, which is there's nothing more important in the world than family, so. She had to take care of that.
Results of the minutes of the regular meeting of the common council held on November twenty, two thousand twenty-five are approved and placed on file among the public records of the city clerk's office.
Move by Counselor Talon, second Counselor Evans. Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Gary.
Anyone here for public comment this evening? With no one here for public comment, we will.
Council approved payrolls of the various departments of the city of Plattsburgh for the weekend in November twenty-sixth. Two thousand twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents. Council approved the bill law by the common council for the week's ending, November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. In the amount of seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and three cents. And December fifth, two thousand twenty-five is the amount of one million, two hundred and one thousand, five hundred. Fifty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Any uh reports this evening from libraries? Climate Task Force.
Um I just wanna say that the SUNY students put on a great presentation on um November twenty-first, right here in City Hall and um. City Climate Task Force's next gathering will be on the seventeenth at five o'clock at Olive Ridley's to kinda celebrate the. Stuff we've done this year and what we're looking forward to next year.
I have to second that. That was a great presentation. Mister Girvich, you're showing us the students.
Motion to remove item seven point two three nine from the table.
Move by Counselor. Oh, never.
Wait, what? You didn't get the email, did you?
That is for the, I I was gonna say it in the work session as for the Y M C A.
Yeah.
We don't have the. Got into the attorney's hands, so it took a little longer than we thought. We don't have the physical copy, so we'll 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 address it at the next meeting.
Item seven point two three, three nine will remain on the table. Item seven point two four two authorize award of installation and construction production of well number two.
Counselor Evans, second Counselor Manette, any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point three four three resolution declaring the intent of the city of Plattsburgh Common Council to act as lead agency proposed action rehabilitation of. Corner East Street in New York Loop Three.
Move by. Counselor Evans. Second Counselor Manette, any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point two four four authorize the mayor to sign professional services agreement with the county of Clinton, our C G I S pro basic license.
Move by Counselor. Evans, second. Counselor Manette, any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point two four five, the common council approves a public hearing to be scheduled on December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. At five thirty P M at forty-one City Hall Place in the Common Council chambers. To hear public comments on the submission of a common community development block grant applications for the twenty twenty-five program year.
Move by. Counselors. I've got a, I got three hands up, so we'll go Bond and Evans. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point two four six common council amendments in two thousand twenty-six mayor's budget.
Move by. Counselor Manette, second Counselor Bond. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point two four seven South Acres Playground Replacement Type Two Secret Determination.
Move by Counselor. Bond, second. Counselor Manette, any discussion? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry. Item seven point two four eight South Acres Bocce Ball Court Installation Type Two Secret Determination.
Move by Counselor. Bond, second. Counselor Manette. Any discussions? Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Harry.
Any new business come towards council this evening? Holiday parade Saturday night, I hope everyone can see it's getting there.
Be on stage again.
I think it'd be, I can, this is my favorite parade of the year one.
When I bocce ball court, I challenge all of you.
To bocce ball. I'll take that, I'm not. That'd be fun.
You will lose.
It'll be fun. It'll be fun. No, this seems funny talking about bocce ball parks on the coolest day of year, so. So it kinda warmed me up a little bit, talked about it, I need some things though. With no other business, I'll entertain and most of food. Counselor Bond, Counselor Manette. Roll call.
Council Bond.
Yes.
Council Evans.
Yes.
Council Strack.
Yes.
Council Talon.
Yes.
Council Manette.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Beauty is a journey. Also, gotta go to this Christmas party, none of us got invited to.